Good evening. This is Binghamton City Council Business Meeting. It is Wednesday, May 7. It is 6:04 PM. I'm calling the meeting to order. Please stand for the Pledge of Legions. Madam Clerk, can we do a roll call, please?
Councilmember Murray?
Aye.
Present. Present.
Present.
Councilmember Middleton?
Present.
Councilmember Kavanaugh?
Present.
Councilmember Hotchkiss?
Present.
Councilmember Medavetzky?
Present.
Councilmember Rathmo?
Present.
Council President Dundon?
Present.
Thank you.
So can I get a motion to move, uh, to approve the last, well, I can't speak, to approve the last business meeting minutes?
Make the motion?
Do I have a second? Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none. So we have reports from committees and appointments. Um, Councilmember Medavetzky, did you have a traffic board?
I do. Uh, traffic board this month was canceled. Um, the, I was notified that everyone who submitted to be on the agenda for this month should be notified. Uh, I'm not CC'd on any of this stuff, so I'm just kind of relaying. Um, and we'll be on the June meeting and that we expect to have our traffic chairwoman back, uh, from leave. So hopefully those will be very good meetings. Thank you.
I do know that we have a planning and a finance committee tomorrow, so we'll move on to our CDAC appointment.
Sorry, I just had a, um, I mean, CDAC update, went to the last meeting. They're in the last stages. I, uh, I, they, we were there at almost nine, but I left a little bit early. So I think, I checked on my emails, they're done, like with the final phase of the budget, uh, for CDAC. So it's just really interesting about that. So yeah, they're, they're the last steps for that, so.
Can I represent what tomorrow's planning committee meeting is about?
Absolutely.
Uh, so we have a planning committee meeting tomorrow. Members will be joined by Mayor Kram, uh, potentially department heads as well, hopefully. But we'll be discussing, um, something that this body has requested for several months now, a redevelopment protocol that includes council, gives us the opportunity as well to include community members in conversations when properties are being considered for demolition and parcels are being considered for redevelopment, um, as well as for vacant lots. So not a plan per se for every single property, but a protocol that is transparent, inclusive, and accountable for when those properties are being considered. Um, that is happening tomorrow at one, one, 1:30. 1:30? Thank you. We've got three meetings tomorrow. Uh, 1:30 tomorrow and it is available, uh, on our YouTube channel. Excuse me, the planning committee is at noon and the finance committee is at 1:30. Thank you.
You have anything you want to say about the finance committee meeting tomorrow? Councilmember Kavanaugh?
Why not? The, uh, the folks of the, of the finance committee meeting will be to, uh, uh, have an opportunity for councilmembers, uh, and the administration and, uh, the folks from Siemens to go over our list of concerns, uh, over the, uh, the Siemens Energy Efficiency Project and, uh, see if we can, uh, come up with, uh, if it's worth coming up with a, a way forward, um, things that we would like to see based on our, uh, our investigation and research into it, uh, we like to see included, not excluded and such, and see if we can come up with a, a new plan. So obviously there are certainly some needed upgrades in there and, uh, some things that we would, uh, and other things that turns out maybe not such a good idea. So that's what we're looking at.
We do have one CDAC appointment. I will hand it over to Councilmember Murray to talk about that.
So, um, Asia Ambler, um, is going to be filling that vacancy for, um, representing the first ward. Um, she has been a longtime resident and is very active in the community and I think she's going to, um, be a great addition to the team, um, as well as, you know, bringing, um, her perspective, um, to the conversation and the work that needs to happen there. So I'm really excited to, um, appoint her and look forward to the good work that will happen.
And I know we have a couple of appointments for the Commission of Conservation of the Environment and I'll hand that over to Councilmember Rathmo.
Thank you, President Dundon. We do. So the Commission for Conservation of the Environment has two open positions. We, uh, received interest from four parties. We will be, so two of those parties, one of whom was previously a member of CCE. The second who has an extensive resume of experience currently works in the climate conservation sector, um, as well as two students. So, uh, we are going to move forward appointments for Len Luca and Tom Costello. But I want to encourage the two students who indicated interest to absolutely engage. We've created pathways for students to actively, um, participate in a way that doesn't impact turnover if they leave. And so still very much would encourage the two students who indicated interest, Julianne and Lauren, um, to join a subcommittee, be a part. Uh, but our appointments are Len and Tom.
So I have to back up for a second. Uh, we, I have to say, or it has to be stated that City Council accepted from CDAC the fact that District One had a vacancy, so that way Asia Ambler could be appointed. So we did accept the fact that CDAC told us there was a vacancy and now we are filling the vacancy. So we're going to move on to the Human Rights Commission. So the mayor presented us with a name in Richard Lewis for the Human Rights Commission, um, because it is the mayor's appointment and to make sure that this is done without it ever being challenged, I'm going to ask for a motion, then a second. We can have a discussion and then we will do a roll call vote, so that way nobody can say that we didn't do anything by the book. So I'm going to start off and ask for a motion to accept the mayor's nominee as Richard Lewis. Do I have a motion? So I have a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
A motion and a second. Any discussion?
Sure. Um, so, uh, Richard Lewis was just honored by the Jewish community on May 4th. So there's a recent news article. I'm just going to read some sections from it. So bear with me. I hate reading out loud. So he's worked tirelessly to support local institutions, including Beth David Synagogue, Temple Israel, the Jewish Federation of Broom Ca- of Greater Binghamton, the Jewish Community Center, and Hillel Academy. Skipping ahead, he's also had many leadership roles in the general community. Organizers added, uh, everyone who knows Dick will, uh, tell you what a gem of a human he is. His impact on the community is beyond measure. Now I want to switch over to here. Uh, more quotes here. "We marvel at Dick's boundless energy and passion in all he does for the community," organized, say, said. Uh, "Given the important and time-intensive role he plays in his legal career, a graduate from Ithaca College and University of Illinois Chicago, John Marshall Law School, Lewis is an attorney at Hinman, Howard, and Cantel focusing on litigation in all aspects of business law." He is the immediate past president of the 80,000-member New York State Bar Association, elected to serve the 2023 to 24 term, um, with the beginning of his 12-month term on June 1st, 2023. Lewis spearheaded what has been called groundbreaking initiatives. In the first month, he served as executive committee liaison on a task force he created on combating antisemitism and anti-Asian hate. The House of Delegates passed the approximately 50-page report in January 2024. Uh, skipping ahead, Lewis, okay. Uh, he worked with former Secretary of State Loretta Lynch and former Secretary of Homeland Security, John Johnson, to put out a nationally recognized work on advancing diversity. Both have been adopted as policy by numerous bar associations, including the American Bar Association. So those are just some snippets to give you a sense of Dick Lewis and the community. Um, and he submitted his resume, uh, when I was president and I did a lot, extensive outreach to all sorts of organizations and law firms. I reached out to him because one of his expertise listed on the Hinman and Howard, Howard and Cantel website was elder law and elderly are considered one of the protected classes this group is meant to support. So, uh, there's my introduction.
So in considering the members of our Human Rights Commission who have been appointed, I had the opportunity to work closely with Chair John Branza on the Community Development Advisory Council. And Dr. Yul came highly recommended by fellow community organizers whom I trust deeply. I otherwise believe Director Adams' representation of immigrants and refugees and Chris's direct experience within the carceral system provide critically relevant perspective. Mr. Lewis was not familiar to me, so I reached out hoping he would be willing to connect. He was, and I let him know that my interest was primarily to discuss the experience and affiliations represented on his resume. We spoke at length about our ties to Binghamton, the increases in homelessness we've both observed, his experience representing landlords in eviction court, his role with the bar association, and the form and function of the commission itself. About 45 minutes into our conversation, I noted the affiliation with the Jewish Federation of Greater Binghamton on his resume. I shared that after reviewing the federation's website, I appreciated the opposition to discrimination against marginalized communities worldwide that is represented. In relation to Israel's war on Gaza, however, statements on the site seem to frame the war as strictly one of self-defense, with a focus on the actions of Hamas without acknowledgement of the full breadth of violence and terror Israel's assaults against Palestinian civilians has and continues to perpetuate. I asked Mr. Lewis directly in relation to his candidacy for Binghamton's Human Rights Commission, whether he agreed with the United Nations Human Rights Commission in their conclusion that Israel's methods of warfare are consistent with genocide. He stated he does not agree with that assertion and believes Israel to be acting fully within their right to defend themselves and fully within the rules of war. I then inquired whether Mr. Lewis believes that Israel's war against Palestinians, whom he refers to as, quote, "people who call themselves Palestinian," as an assertion of his support of the Israeli occupation of Palestine, is justified. He answered immediately yes, but then rephrased his response stating, "I don't want to see children getting killed." But reiterated that he believes Israel's response is and continues to be justified in light of the antisemitism Jews in that region have experienced. He did not speak to whether he supports a ceasefire, but shared he does not support a resolution until Israel can be completely assured of its security and sovereignty. I want to be clear that I have no intention of downplaying either the historical impact or present reality of antisemitism. But I stated in these chambers in February of last year and will state again tonight that I believe strongly that being against antisemitism and pro-Palestine go hand in hand. The present-day Holocaust we are witnessing in Gaza, the more than 52,000 Palestinian civilians killed in the last year and a half, and the results of the ongoing nine-week thus far siege is only the most recent iteration as of Israel's now 108-years-long attempt to remove Palestinians from the region, based entirely on its belief that Israel's right to claim that territory trumps the Palestinian people's right to exist. And anyone, in my opinion, who shares that belief is not fit to weigh in on matters of human rights.
Does anybody else want to make a comment? All right, I guess we will do a roll call. Madam Clerk, can we do a roll call?
Councilmember Rathmo? Councilmember Medavetzky?
Aye.
Councilmember Hotchkiss?
Nay.
Councilmember Kavanaugh?
Aye.
Councilmember Middleton?
Aye.
Councilmember Murray?
Aye.
Council President Dundon?
Aye.
Thank you. That is five-two.
So we have no public hearings to set. We have no public hearings tonight. Public comment. Residents wishing to submit public comment may do so electronically by emailing their comments prior to 1:00 PM on the day of the meeting to clerk@cityofbinghampton.gov or in person during the meeting. Is there anybody in attendance that would like to come down and speak during public comment?
Yeah. Good evening. My name is Salca. I live on the east side of Binghamton and, um, my public comment today is pretty much that we should have something on the city website talking about good cause. Um, tenants are asking what it is and they want to see more information about it. And I think it's fair, um, that our community members have this information since it's a new law. So I would like to request that, um, you guys can make that happen and get some information for us on the city website. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Anyone else like to speak? And you, uh, Madam Clerk, you said we didn't have any other comments? All right, we're going to be moving on. No review of the mayoral veto, no second-led red legislation, so first-red legislation, local law LL 25-03, considered in special. I'll hand it over to Councilmember Medavetzky.
Like to make a motion to pass, uh, local law LL 25-03, a local law amending the city of Binghamton code to 95-1 liability of city in certain actions limited, prior notice required.
Have a motion. Do we have a second?
Wait a second.
Any discussion?
Yeah, so, uh, we had an original version, um, that we voted on and was voted down uh, because, uh, councilmembers wanted to see an email version way of notifying the ci- uh, the city, um, and not just having to physically hand a copy. Um, so we have made those modifications.
I think I would. I know you said we made those modifications. Council here made those modifications and I really.
The committee, yeah, the committee made the modification.
Totally. I think I just want to make sure that's, like, I really appreciate that you were willing to go back, take a look at it, hear what we were saying, and make those adjustments. So, thank you for that.
Anybody else have anything they want to add? Hearing none?
Well, wait, wait, wait. Let me just highlight that, um, there, and we, a, a piece of what needs to happen once, after we pass this is to make sure that people are aware, again, this kind of goes to the website thing, that people know how to find the email address that you, you need in order to legally notify the city. Um, so it's noticeofdefects@cityofbinghampton.gov, uh, once this goes through the full process of being a law. Um, and, um, so I wanted to make sure that we are aware that this is another one of those laws that, once passed, people need to have some sort of education or knowledge or website info about.
Anyone else? Madam Clerk, can we do a roll call?
Councilmember Rathmo?
Aye.
Councilmember Medavetzky?
Aye.
Councilmember Hotchkiss?
Aye.
Councilmember Kavanaugh?
Aye.
Councilmember Middleton? Councilmember Murray?
Aye.
Council President Dundon?
Aye.
Thank you. That is seven-zero.
Next is introductory ordinance O 25-35. It's considered in public works and I'll hand it over to Councilmember Hotchkiss.
Make a motion to adopt introductory ordinance O 25-35. This is an ordinance authorizing the mayor or his designated to accept $211,065.65 grant from Broom County.
Have an emotion? Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion?
So this money is being accepted, uh, to make improvements to, uh, the I, the I district. Uh, there's, I think, the majority of it is specifically for, uh, improvements to the, uh, the alleyway that is between, uh, State Street and Washington Street, um, to make that a public, you know, public right-of-way and have it be a little bit more attractive just to make the, the arts district, uh, a little bit more pedestrian-friendly and cohesive. Uh, and then I think there's also money for mural in there, but that's what we're voting on.
Anyone have anything they want to add?
I think I would just add, so my vote tonight would not necessarily reflect the project itself. It's simply I have a lot of lingering questions related to the Greater Binghamton Fund. Um, I do appreciate that, uh, Director Glose sent contact information my way after, excuse me, this ordinance was discussed so that I could reach out to get those questions answered. Uh, that meeting has not yet happened. Um, so, again, not necessarily reflective of the project itself, but the way that the Greater Binghamton Fund has been, um, been spent, I still have some unanswered questions.
Councilmember Rathmo, since you have some unanswered questions, would you like this to be held over?
Yes.
Then can I get a motion to hold this over to our next business meeting?
Make a motion.
Do I have a second? I'll second.
Okay. Discussion.
Discussion.
Was this ex- I'm trying to remember if this was expedited and if so, do we, do we know what the timeframe is or?
This was.
Okay.
No, it wasn't expedited.
Wasn't expedited.
And my understanding is the deadline for the funds to be spent is, uh, uh, end of 2026.
And if we hear that there's an, some reason, something we didn't understand and there's an emergency, we can set up a special business meeting.
Yes, we can. We can always adapt and overcome.
Okay, great.
And I'm happy to forward the responses to the specific questions that I sent relative to the G- the Greater Binghamton Fund to councilmembers so that everybody has it after tomorrow.
Are you able to, um, share the questions as well, though? Like, even if you haven't received the responses, I'm curious to know the things that didn't sit well with you or that you're curious to know more about.
Absolutely. Let me pull them up.
Anybody else want to add anything to the discussion? Seeing none, we are voting on holding this over to our next business meeting. Madam Clerk, can we do a roll call? After a quick conference with Corp Counsel, a motion and a second is all you need to hold over because a holdover guarantees that you will vote on it on the next business meeting. We had the motion, we had the second, so it is officially held over. We are moving on.
Oh, wait, do you want my questions or no? Do you want me to state the questions that I? They're very quick. Okay, it's very quick. Very quick. So because the request is over 200 grand, that seems like a significant amount of money. The questions I had specifically in reviewing the strategic investment plan of the Greater Binghamton Fund, of the 145 new housing units that were projected in the strategic investment plan for the fund, all 71 of the affordable units were located in Endicott and there were 74 market rate, which I would identify at these rates as luxury. Um, 74 market rate units projected to be located in the city of Binghamton, um, about 50. So my question, several of them, when I reviewed the plan, many of those projects didn't move forward. So my questions specifically were how many of those 50-ish units were actually created in the city of Binghamton? What is the rental range of the units for each project? How was the funding otherwise allocated for the projects that did not move forward? If it was spent, if it was redirected, and if any funds remain available for project consideration? My thinking is that if we have a, a pot with 200 grand and then we have additional pots that we're not currently aware of, again, going back to wanting a more transparent and inclusive conversation around redevelopment. Thank you.
So we have to backtrack for a second. Um, just me wanting to be president on the safer side and going back and forth with Corp Counsel. We are going to do a roll call on the holdover just to be safe, so that way there's no legal challenges down in the future. So Madam Clerk, can we do a roll call?
Councilmember Rathmo?
Aye.
Councilmember Medavetzky?
Aye.
Councilmember Hotchkiss?
Nay.
Councilmember Kavanaugh?
Nay.
Councilmember Middleton?
Aye.
Councilmember Murray?
Aye.
Council President Dundon?
Aye.
Thank you. That is five-two.
Next is introductory resolution R 25-23, considered in planning, and I'll hand it over to Councilmember Rathmo.
Thank you, Council President. I make a motion to adopt introductory resolution R 25-23, a resolution calling on the mayor to issue an RFP to study the success of the good cause eviction law.
I'm going to second that motion, so we have a motion and a second discussion.
Uh, just as a reminder, this resolution was submitted by a community member, Miles Burnett, and echoes really a commitment that I think this body represented throughout the process of our deliberation related to good cause, where we wanted to make sure that, um, its impact was studied, its performance had the opportunity to be adjusted as needed. Um, so appreciated the submission, uh, by Mr. Burnett and happy to move this forward.
Uh, I would, I think it's, it's worth noting, uh, Councilmember Medavetzky and Councilmember Kavanaugh, myself, had the opportunity to kind of, uh, talk to a policy analyst group, uh, just about what it would take to study good cause and if there was a, a, a clean way to, uh, isolate the effects it has and like, measure them. And it, it's a tough question. Um, I don't think that they had all the, all the answers, uh, and, um, yeah, so it's going to be, I'm interested in the RFP if there is like another group out there that has, uh, methodology that they think would be effective at this, um, in studying the effects. And also it's just worth noting that it's going to be, it's going to be a, got to be like committed to like a two, two or three-year timeframe, I think. Um, so, yeah, that's all I wanted to add.
And they, they sent us, um, a study that they had done for a different topic that was maybe a little bit more clear-cut and they wanted to make sure we understood that that study was a hundred thousand dollar study done back in 2008 so that we have some sense of what the cost of the study would be, be quite significant. what the cost of the study would be be quite significant, which is something this body discussed when we were first brought this topic up during good cause. I guess I brought this topic up during good cause.
Anybody else have anything they'd like to add? Hearing none. Madam Clerk, can we do a roll call?
Councilmember Rathmel?
Aye.
Councilmember Medavetsky?
Aye.
Councilmember Hotchkiss?
Aye.
Councilmember Kavanaugh? Councilmember Middleton? Councilmember Murray? Council President Dundon?
Aye.
Thank you. That is seven zero.
Next is introductory resolution R twenty-five dash twenty-five, considered in municipal and public affairs, and I'll hand it over to Councilmember Middleton.
Thank you, President Dundon. This is introductory twenty-five dash twenty-five, a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter in a MOU with the Family Enrichment Network, support of the water shut-off displacement prevention strategy. I'd like to make a motion. I don't know if I said that.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second discussion.
I guess I'll discuss. I just wanted to start off by thanking Councilmember Rathmel and Councilmember Medavetsky for working on this. Well, both, well, sorry, yeah, both of you. For room. Yeah, but for working on this is is very, very important along with Corp Counsel, like it it's very important and we need this. And this, just having this is going to definitely let families stay in their home. So it is another way of preventing homelessness. So thank you guys both for working very hard on this.
Anybody else want to add to the discussion?
Well, I think it's reasonable to mention that water shut-offs are are ongoing, but the next round is Monday. So Southside will be having the water shut-offs on Monday, so this is, yeah. Good, but we're always behind the eight ball.
Anyone else?
Yeah, I I just add that I appreciate Councilmember Rathmel's diligence on this and recognizing that there's like an opportunity to prevent displacement and being able to quickly identify a strategy and work towards some type of solution that will will help combat unnecessary displacement that would be basically at the hands of the city. That's all I had to add. I think there's like, the more the more of these like small victories that we have, that it's like unnecessary displacement, it's it's going to have a larger impact on our housing stability and our communities. So every every little win helps. So, thank you.
The only thing I'm going to chime in to Councilman Hotchkiss is no victory is a small one. Enjoy every win you have because they are few and far between sometimes.
So I also want to mention that Treasurer Harris has not been identified. He and his department and the water sewer billing guys along with Council Harry are very willing to be a part of that strategic strategic discussion. So I think the collaboration was such an encouragement and I am very much looking forward to continuing that kind of commitment to collaboration internally. I mean, we do it as a council. We have strived to do it since, well, I guess everybody else took their seats, but, you know, and I and I really hope that that is a thread that can continue.
Anyone else? Hearing none. Madam Clerk, can we do a roll call?
Councilmember Rathmel?
Aye.
Councilmember Medavetsky?
Aye.
Councilmember Hotchkiss?
Aye.
Councilmember Kavanaugh? Councilmember Middleton?
Aye.
Councilmember Murray?
Aye.
Council President Dundon?
Aye.
Thank you. That is seven zero.
Next is introductory resolution R twenty-five dash twenty-six, considered in planning, and I'll hand it over to Councilmember Rathmel.
Thank you, Council President. I'd like to make a motion to adopt introductory resolution twenty, R twenty-five twenty-six, a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with New York State Department of State for a Brownfields Opportunity Area Grant.
Having a motion? Do we have a second?
I'll second.
A motion and a second discussion.
For context, this, the grant, Brownfields Opportunity Grant identified is an amount not to exceed five hundred thousand for pre-development activities at the one eighty-seven Clinton Street Brownfield site. One of, I believe, at least three resolutions that we've discussed regarding that property in particular. So looking forward to being able to see the redevelopment actually start.
Would anyone like to add anything? Hearing none. Madam Clerk, can we do a roll call?
Councilmember Rathmel?
Aye.
Councilmember Medavetsky?
Aye.
Councilmember Hotchkiss?
Aye.
Councilmember Kavanaugh?
Aye.
Councilmember Middleton? Councilmember Murray?
Aye.
Council President Dundon?
Aye.
Thank you. That is seven zero.
Next is introductory resolution R twenty-five dash twenty-seven, considered in finance, and I'll hand it over to Councilmember Kavanaugh.
I'd like to motion to approve a resolution authorizing a home rule request to authorize the city of Binghamton to offer an optional twenty-five-year retirement plan to firefighter Dave Edwards and firefighter David Edward and Scott Peblek. This is RL twenty-five dash eighty-eight.
Second.
Have an emotion and a second discussion?
I'm sorry, did you say R twenty-five twenty-eight or?
Eighty-eight.
Twenty-seven.
Those numbers on the legislation, on the left, it says RL twenty-five dash eighty-eight and on the top right, it says RL twenty-five dash twenty-seven.
That's the RL associated and the introductory number, they're both correct.
Well, I'll mention RL twenty-five twenty-seven as well, so however you want to reference it.
Anyone else want to add to this discussion?
Explanation is just that the retirement for these two firefighters, their plan got screwed up at some point and the Firefighters Union worked to resolve it with their state leadership and city leadership, I guess. I don't think there's anything much else to add. And they're, they created a strategy to prevent this from happening in the future.
Yes.
All right, Madam Clerk, can we do a roll call?
Councilmember Rathmel?
Aye.
Councilmember Medavetsky?
Aye.
Councilmember Hotchkiss?
Aye.
Councilmember Kavanaugh?
Aye.
Councilmember Middleton?
Aye.
Councilmember Murray?
Aye.
Council President Dundon?
Aye.
Thank you. That is seven zero.
So moving on to communications from counsel, I'm going to start in reverse order tonight, so Councilmember Rathmel, you get to go first.
I do not have any communications.
Councilmember Medavetsky?
All right, so blue bags, it looks like we are going to have the two new stores. They have not received their bags yet as of today. I ran over, ran around. I did email with our treasurer and he communicated with Waste Zero and it sounds like they're going to have their first deliveries on Friday. So I'm going to try and attempt to purchase blue bags from the new stores on Fridays, on Friday. There's a new four-way stop at Woodland and Mary. Traffic Board had voted to put in the four-way stop after winter so as not to cause confusion with getting used to new stop signs during inclement weather. Feel free to send feedback on it. I went up and observed for a little bit and saw that people seemed to be stopping. The four-way tags are going to be added. They're not up quite yet, but they're coming. And appreciate that DPW with the new signs already put on the extra reflective strip. With the cancellation of traffic board tomorrow, the topic of the Arena Street and other side of the street parking will be taken up in June. Celebrations on Park is going to be celebrating their one-year anniversary, so congratulations. I want to thank the volunteers who helped at the Greenway Maintenance Days that I organized and the volunteers that assisted the Story Garden cleanup this past Tuesday. So the Southside Neighborhoods cleanup was postponed and I didn't see a new date on that one yet. Discovery Center has Book Fest coming up. It's the beauty within the magical story of the ugly duckling. They're going to have Four Counties Library on site. You can sign up for a library card there. And the Tri-Cities Opera is going to be performing. And of course, I didn't write down the date, but it is coming up very soon and it will be from ten AM to two PM at the Discovery Center. The Zoo on Mother's Day, Mother's Day weekend, both the tenth and the eleventh will have, it'll be free for moms on Mother's Day weekend. And already mentioned, Southside Water Shut-Offs are starting on Monday. Also, for people following the news, Rite Aid is going to be shutting their stores in New York State, which is a good thing. We're going to have a new store selling blue bags on Southside East because currently everyone is dependent on Rite Aid. I did correspond with Rite Aid today and they sent me the following. Thank you for sending your inquiry regarding the news article you saw about Rite Aid closures. Rite Aid is pursuing the sale of its prescriptions pharmacy and front-end inventory as well as other assets. This means that over the next several months, all Rite Aid distribution centers will be closing and all stores will either close or be operated by new owner. During this process, which is expected to take several months, Rite Aid customers can continue to access pharmacy services and products in stores and online, including prescriptions and immunizations. So, yeah. This week, we had the memorial for officers. While I was there, I got to meet the widow of Lee Barda, who is a Southside resident. She was grateful to get some updates on what's going on at the Lee Barda Center and had to talk to her a little bit at the memorial, so. Thirty years. I don't, if people have ideas about if we can do something as a council, reach out to me. And I think, oh, Southside Sundays, Southside Sundays start this month. Those are the Sunday concerts in the Southside Commons. If you go to the Southside Neighborhood Facebook page or to my Facebook, my council Facebook page, you can see all the list of the upcoming Southside Sundays concerts. Thanks.
Councilmember Hotchkiss?
The only thing I want to say is that I, we had the good cause training last week at the library. I think it went fairly well. I got some decent feedback and some things that I can change for future trainings, including having a virtual and like eventually being recorded. Also, we're like moving forward with the the page for the city website. I was just working on that for like right before this meeting, so that should be, I'm guessing next twenty-four to forty-eight hours, hopefully we'll have have that up there and have some information available for for tenants and landlords who need some, need some guidance. That's all I got for now. Thanks.
Councilmember Kavanaugh?
So right now, Kipsey, New York, the New York State Historical Preservation Development and Planning Conference, rather, is going on. Earl Walker, who's a letter carrier in the third district, resident, and and it's also his his kind of territory, is receiving an award from the State Historic Preservation Office for his encouragement in getting people to sign up for historic preservation credits, particularly in the in the Abel Bennett tract. He was, through, you know, no lobbying of anybody else, he just, enough people, you know, his, his, his own initiative, getting out there into the community and talking about these credits, brought him to the notice of the state because they were literally getting more applications from him than probably multiple planning offices throughout the state. And so they are recognizing him with with an award, which is wonderful. I was supposed to be down there, but my car and I had a severe difference of opinion, so I'm here instead. But I want to pass along a word of congratulations to him and I I think we'll probably get a proclamation to him as well. So it's really nice seeing a citizen be recognized like that and for a good cause.
Councilmember Middleton?
No comment today.
Councilmember Murray?
Me today.
And I don't have any comments, so we, can we get a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
And a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Meeting adjourned.
Carla, I think. Carla?
Carla?